Call this meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There has been a couple additions to the agenda. So it'd be six C ambulance vehicle, six D meeting space requests.
Six C?
Six, yeah, C, D, E and Sock River Park campsite excavation.
With those additions, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion is carried. There's consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills and purchase orders, approval of the investments. I'll go to that in just a minute. And then, let's see, there's gambling resolution for, resolution number 2022-57 for Church of St. Mary's. Resolution number 2022-58, donation from the Melrose Lions. There was a street park worker step increase, squad car, Stearns County RDB project, construction invoice and an engineering invoice. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Second.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. We are now going to open forums, so if there's some people that would like to talk, open forums up for whoever. And we have a few people that would like to talk tonight. So, if you could just stand up there and state your name, and you have two minutes to talk. We really don't give conversations back and forth. We just take and listen to what you have to say and, and then it gets dispersed to staff for, you know, future stuff, so.
I am Jen Houston. I'm representing the Birch Hills Community Youth Center here located in Melrose. And just talking about the benefits of the youth center and how it has, we've been open since April and how we've reached out to the youth in our community. It's been a safe place. Kids have been welcoming it and coming, as well as the community members have been open as well to having it. As well as the school has been willing to put out announcements for us as to what's going on in the community youth center. They've also provided busing, which is phenomenal for the kids. So if they're wanting to come right directly from school, we're open from three to eight on Tuesdays. And then Wednesdays, we're open from three to six for the youth center. So it's been just an awesome outreach for kids. And then also, we've been receiving donations from the community. We've got donations from the American Legion, Level Ground, Coburn's, Woman of Today, Ron's Oil, Sign Lava, Sterns Electric, and I'm sure there's many more, just from the random donations as well, too. So it's just been a blessing to work with these kids and to know that people care about them, so.
I'm far from a youth, but I don't know where this location is.
It's 330 West Riverside.
Oh, okay.
So right where that detour is at when you come down the hill, it's that building right there, by Montessori, yep.
Yep.
So.
Yes, I have been there and it's pretty amazing, the stuff that you have inside there for the kids, different things they can do. I seen that you guys had different, you know, foods there for kids, you know, because there are some less fortunate children in our town. And it's sort of nice to see that, you know, some people can get a little bit after school and some of the things that they've been doing there, community. I really enjoyed being there. Yeah, it's a great place, really glad that you're here, so. And remember, open forum is always open for, you know, if you have events, you're always welcome here also. I try to make that known to everybody, so, because ours does get broadcast on TV, it's on Facebook and YouTube. So if you have some events that are gonna go on, you're always welcome to come back here, so. Yeah, you guys can take a look, too.
Again, we thank you for this opportunity. We could really just use the community's help getting things going a little smoother, a little faster, maybe, to have the availability to get some extra things for the kids. Some of the things that we're looking at that we could utilize, we could use some more art supplies. We do have a lot of things going on with the Arts Council in Melrose. We could utilize some of those things. Some different food donations. We are trying to provide meals at least once a week, if not multiple times a week. We would like to get to that point, with cleaning supplies, paper supplies. Some of the things we might be looking from for the community as well would be internet. We're looking to get it so when the kids come over with their Chromebooks, they need to be able to log in so we can help them with school projects if they need it, to assist them in those things. So we're looking at possibly getting internet soon, hopefully. Any ideas on that would be great, as well as games. We could certainly utilize more people from the community. We have some, right now, most of the, most of the time is from Birch Hills Community Church's members. We have some people that are joining in from the community to help out with time, giving time, and we would love to have more. We really want this to be based for the community, not as a whole church thing, as a community place for the kids that other adults can come and bring their ideas in and help out in those fashions. So, yeah, we could really utilize people's time as well as finances. We've got a lot of other things we would like to provide for the kids, get some bigger games and things like that going there. So any, getting the word out for our community people to get the word out that this is there, first of all, that it is available for the kids and that it is just a safe place. And one of the, one of the things that I think we're hearing back that I would like to be able to, we would like to be able to set straight is it's not all the time 24/7 youth group, because that's some of the things we're hearing. It's like, oh, it's just youth group all the time. No, no, it's only one evening a week that we have a couple hours of youth group. The rest of the time is really just for the kids. It's not about, you know, pushing any agenda or anything like that. Will they hear the love of God? Yes, but it's not, that's not the agenda. We're not trying to push that. We're just trying to give them a place where they can see adults helping them. So I just would like to reiterate what Jen said, just a huge thank you to all of the people that have donated, all of the businesses and people that have donated and just the blessing that we've had people stop by in the middle of just hanging out with kids and say, you know, I just, I just found out about this, or I'm so excited about this, here's $25, here's $50, here's whatever, put it towards good use for the youth center. So just want to thank the community for that. It's been such a great, and their words of encouragement have been so great.
My name's Becky Clausen and I also volunteer with the youth center. Just to give you a little bit of idea about our numbers, during the summer months, our youth center was averaging about 55 students a month and it's increased since schools started with a couple more new kids just that we, that come to us. We meet them, they've heard about it either through personal invitation or through the different ways that we, like Tim said, it's up at school and we advertise it, a lot of word of mouth, but we're to probably 70, 80 per month now. And we would really, we recognize that it's probably gonna a lot be through word of mouth as our kids and the community members that are coming tell other people about what's going on and that we've got a safe place for kids. So it's really, we're excited about the opportunity, we're run by volunteers. Like Tim said, we'd like to see more community members that come in. We've got a way of vetting volunteers, just to make sure it's all a safe thing. But it's really a no judgment environment, everybody welcomed, included, everybody's wanted and it's kind of a come and go atmosphere where you can come for a while or stay the whole time. We would love to be able to offer more free meals. I know one of our teachers at school was talking, was talking to a kid about it and the kid said, well, is there food? And so that is, that is something that, of course, all middle schoolers and high schoolers are hungry, but some kids really are. They go home and maybe they don't have it there, so we'd love to be able to offer that for free. And our connection with the Art Council, we're excited about. Barb Detler was in a couple of weeks now doing a couple of different projects. And our kids are learning new skills. This next week, we're going to have somebody from the Art Council come and the kids, show the kids how to make ornaments that will then be, they'll be able to sell at the holiday kickoff. So just lots of creative ideas, drawing, not only on games, but also the arts. So our purpose is really to give kids a safe place to be where they can find connections, friendships. We don't want any kid to feel like they don't have a place to belong. So thanks for the opportunity to tell about our youth center.
So if someone was interested in writing out a check to you, how would they write their check out to give to you guys?
So our finances go through Birch Hills Community Church.
Okay.
We can write it off to the Birch Hills Community Youth Center.
Okay.
Right.
The finances are separate.
Good.
It goes through, but it's separately a check, but it's separate for just youth center activities and things like that.
So Birch Hills Youth Center would be, you know, what they could put for their memo or whatever they wanted to on it, so. So, you know, so people can, yeah, so, you know, it's a good way to, you know, bring that out for all of you.
Yeah.
I don't think we gave ages as basically 11 or sixth grade through 12th grade or 19.
Okay.
It's kind of what we're searching for right now, or helping out right now.
Yeah, so some sixth grade till about the age of 18, 19 years old are always welcome.
Yeah.
So, great.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, and you're always welcome to come back, too, okay? If there's some other things, definitely let us know, like you said, it's public and it'll help you out.
Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. I'm coming in on behalf of Belgrade Cooperative. I've recently accepted the general manager position and just coming up on completing my second week here with serving the Melrose and Belgrade communities as well as Central Minnesota with AIG inputs and residential heat, home heat. My family and I moved over here from South Dakota and have some family in the, in the area and looking forward to being a part of the, the local communities and being a part of this area. And it's always easier to put a, put a name to the face, too. So I'll be the, we have Dan running our location here in Melrose, so no changes within our community and our business in town here, but just wanted to stop and introduce myself and, and we look forward to working in this area going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, so just give us your, your full name yet, just, just so.
Eric Paulson.
Eric Paulson.
Yep.
So, yeah, no, we're glad you're in the community and glad you're part of a, a great business that has been here for a long time, so.
Thank you.
Glad you're here, thank you. We are on to reports. Chief Nurse?
Good evening. Our monthly statistics for September 2022 in our traffic area, we had 32 citations, 125 verbal warnings, one written warning. For 2022, we had 375 calls to request for service. Last year was 343, so we had a little increase there. We ended on ICR 2670 and last year was 2899, so we are still down from last year's numbers, but holding pretty consistent for the year. In September, we had 33 agency assist calls, that's been pretty consistent in those low 30 range, so it's good to see those numbers are either staying consistent. We'd like to see them drop a bit, means everybody's calming down, or at least we don't have to help out as often, but we'll continue to provide the help whenever we're needed anywhere, so. Some other areas, the ordinance violations that we had from last May are all complete. They were completed early, probably mid to late September, right be, right after our last council meeting that got taken care of, so. Of course, when the deadlines all come and we start to file papers and everything else with the courts, all of a sudden, everything gets taken care of, so. It's good to see that they are complete and hopefully next year, we don't even get to the point that we have to have any abatement notices sent out. The Melrose Community LLC, the Rose Park issue that we're dealing with, that is still on the judge's desk or being evaluated by the judge. They have till December, basically, to issue their opinion or their judgment, because they are given 90 days to do so, so. I wouldn't expect any news on that till the 11th hour for the most part. Earlier in your agenda, on the consent agenda, there was a squad car change. We got a call from John Wees, Jai called and said he's not able to get us a 22, 2022 squad and he said he can't get one till 2024. So he gave us the clearing to go with 1040 who has a state contract. They did preorder 100 squad cars in September, so luckily, we were able to reserve one of those so we can in 2023. There was a change in the pricing, but it was under $10,000, so Colleen and Tessa took care of that. We have room in our budget for it, so should be being built sometime in November and we should get it roughly February, so. In theory, 14, 15 months after we ordered the original one, we got one coming. So I may come to the council in 2023 for the 24 squad that we're supposed to be ordering, but I'll check with 1040 to see what they're seeing for lead times for upcoming years. If things are getting better or worse, maybe we can hold it closer to 2024 year or not, but that should be basically everything in our police department, unless you have any questions.
Are there any other manufacturers, say like GM or Chevy, that deals with squad cars at all, or have we ever?
Yep, Chrysler, Dodge, they still build an SUV and a car. Chevy builds the Tahoe, they have some trucks as well. They're in the same boat, they open up for, for building, they take their 3,000 vehicle order and then they close. So for the most part, it's open for about, they say it's gonna be open a week, but it's open for about a day and a half. Their orders are filled, they close it, so. Thankfully, 1040 was able to get ahead of things a little bit for this time around and we'll most likely talk with them in the future until the rest of this stuff calms down. So I don't know how lucky we'll be able to be to work with John Wees for the short term anyway.
Sounds good, thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. So that's not here.
Correct. That's our report.
So a new report from the attorney, city planner report, Sheila?
Good evening. Just to give you a preview, on October 31st, the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to be holding two public hearings. The first is going to be a conditional use permit from QuickTrip to build a new facility on the former Melrose State Bank US Bank property. Currently, we are receiving comments, working with city engineer, Watershed District, Environmental Services. The notice of the public hearing has been published in the Star Post yesterday and notice has been sent to the affected property owners. The second request we're gonna be hearing, our second public hearing we're gonna be having is from Riverside Development Group. The request is for the allowance of eight fewer parking spots than set forth in the zoning ordinance. We welcome tonight Mr. Goman, who represents Riverside Development Group. He is going to be here as there are other action items in the agenda unrelated to this variance request. To let you know on the variance request, according to the plans for development, 73 off-site parking spots would be required. The development is asking to proceed with 65. The main reason for this is we want to keep that sidewalk. Now that the park is done, we want to make sure we have a sidewalk to get to the park. And so it would be a difference of eight parking spots. We have the site plan drawings and everything in my office. We welcome public to come to the public hearing, or if they have questions beforehand. I've already started to field some questions from people. You're welcome to come in and take a look at what we have. We are also working on other planning questions for these projects, including securing easements. Dave and I were just talking about some easement language. In other matters, we have submitted a letter of intent for the Minnesota State Act of Transportation Infrastructure Grant to put a sidewalk in on County Road 168 from Fifth Avenue to 11th Avenue, basically from the intersection until Daylight Court. We are working with Stearns County Highway Department on that project. We will hear by the end of the month if we are recommended to proceed with a full application. That sidewalk is in the capital plan for next year, but it would be nice to find a different way to fund it. So we will keep working on that. As I mentioned in my written report, we are waiting to hear on two other grants. One is the Deed Childcare Grant and the other one is a grant for funding for improvements to the river park. I have an update on that. We did advance to the next round on a grant for the recreational spaces in the park. I have until November 9th to complete a full application. In this particular grant, 77 organizations submitted letters of intent, 22 were invited to go forward. So we are in the mix in the final 22. I think that's gonna be halved again, a half, another half is gonna be eliminated, but we're gonna try our best to bring forward a solid final application. Work continues on brainstorming ideas and resolutions to Rose Park. An update on that, we are getting information that currently, the owner of the park is busy working on trying to comply with the things that Stearns County Environmental Services wrote up for. Specifically today, I guess there was a boom truck and some work on brush and trees and the issues that he was cited for. So that work is ongoing and we will continue to monitor that. We are also working on some rezoning and replating on other potential developments, including Railroad West. At the Planning and Zoning last commission meeting, we discussed comprehensive plan updates, the future's land map and other potential zoning updates that we really should consider, and we're doing some research on that. Since completing the report to you, some discussions have taken place about a ribbon cutting or a ceremony out on the bridge once it's open. I researched because I didn't want to just pick a date out of the sky. I wanted a date of significance or a date in history that would mean something. And so from page 21 of The Mel and the Rose, Chapter 2, "When Moses and Lucinda Adley sold their 160 acres along the banks of the Sock River for $500 to Edwin and William Clark on November 17th, 1871, neither the seller nor the buyer knew the full dimensions of that financial transaction." It's a great chapter if you want to read it. So I am proposing a ribbon cutting on November 17th, which would be 151 years to the date of when Moses Adley bought that property. It is fully expected that the bridge will be open prior to then, but this would be a ceremony. So with your consent, we would go forward, invite former city administrators, city council members, as well as the contractors involved, the highway department. So we would like your consent to move forward with that date or any other date that you would suggest. That is also the date of your next regular city council meeting. I will be back later in the agenda for other action items.
Sounds good. I think that would be a good idea.
Makes sense, my mind.
Better budget workshop, too?
City engineer report?
All right, I like following Sheila, she took about half my stuff off my list, so that's appreciated. I've been working on the craft lot next door, QuickTrip reviews, Daylight Court with Maida, all those things Sheila talked about, so I'm good there. We did get some soil boring information back from those borings that we approved long ago. Somewhat good news on Mustang Lane, we have the adequate sub base there, we can just redo the pavement on that one, so that was good news. That'll get a little cheaper. Seventh, a little bit of mixed news, some borings are good, some borings are not. So it'll be a little cheaper than before, but probably not as cheap as I was hoping to get to. Fourth Street down by Spirits and the gas station down there, there's still some peat underneath that one despite some rumors that, you know, there was some subgrade correction and there definitely was some because there is 10 feet of sand down there, but there's still peat in spots. So once we dig the sanitary sewer through there, that's gonna be a mottled mess that we'll have to take care of, so that one's gonna be as bad as we thought it could.
Is it up to do some de-watering then, or?
I think that's very likely. I think we will have a lot of de-watering down there, I think. I believe the soil boring indicated water at three feet and I don't think that surprises anybody, especially with some floating storm sewer down there that's already happened, so. So not great news on that one, but I'll take the good news from the north end of town that we don't have to go as deep as I thought we did, so.
I would agree.
But otherwise, like I said, Sheila helped me out a lot, so anything for me.
Very good.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you so much. City administrator report, Lee?
As Sheila's already reported, the RDB project is proceeding. I appreciate the public's patience with Main Street. We really do apologize that it has taken as long as it has, it's things that are not within our control and so we do really appreciate people's patience with how this project is going. I'm not gonna say that the bridge is gonna open early, I'm gonna say that it will open when the contract is supposed to have it open. So according to that, it looks like it'll be sometime in mid-November. If we ended up getting it open earlier, that would be a fantastic bonus for us. Couple updates regarding housing strategy. Tracy is gonna be joining us via phone a little bit later to talk through action items related to housing, but just to give you a couple of updates on two of the projects that we're working on. One is County Road 168 Riverfront and we are dealing with some title issues on that property, so we're moving forward with a quiet title action. MADA at their September meeting agreed to cover the costs associated with the quiet title action and at their, half the cost and then at their October meeting suggested that we move forward with this without further delay. So that's where we're at with that right now. We also secured quotes for completing the proposed improvements for Daylight Court 2. They came in higher than the original estimate of approximately 187,000 to 230,000. Because this is above the threshold for competitive bids, the city would not award that, they could not award this. We'd have to go actually through a bidding process. The housing developer that we've been pursuing to construct single-family homes is indicated due to a number of reasons, particularly the high water in the area. They are not interested in pursuing that at this time, so we are choosing not to exercise the option to purchase at this time. SCH indicated that there, should there be further interest, we can certainly go back and bid this at a later date. So that's kind of where we're at with those two projects. And again, later on in the agenda, we're gonna be talking about a couple other items related to housing. Any questions?
All right, prior to action items, a nice complicated one from the start, MPCA MOS for PFOS monitoring.
So the city of Melrose has been targeted by MPCA as one of several communities for the state PFOS monitoring program. So PFOS, I'm not gonna try and attempt to say it because I will botch it, but it basically is miniscule plastic pieces that you find in everything. So it's like a forever type of chemical. And the reason we were chosen is because we have three industries that we have under SIU agreements in the city and so we've been working closely with Messer, which is our legal and our lobbying arm of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and submitted comments to MPCA about that proposed MOU that they wanted us to put in place. So in your packet, there was a, the MOU along with a fact sheet. The MPCA has been able to obtain funding to help with a portion of the sampling and analyst cost of the municipal PFOS monitoring plan that they are mandating that we put in place. Facilities that sign and commit to the terms and conditions of the MOU will have a designated MPCA contractor complete onsite sampling of the first two sampling events. Then they'll be designated, or they'll be sent to a designated MPCA laboratory. The cost of the collection and the analysis will be covered by the funding that we have obtained. MPCA is still pursuing funding to cover the remaining two samples and will communicate that as information is available. This was brought up before the Melrose Public Utilities Commission and they are recommending the city enter into a MOU agreement with MPCA for statewide monitoring of PFOS. So the action item as requested would be the council to give consideration to approving entering into the MOU between the city and MPCA for the statewide monitoring of PFOS.
Ms. Winter, I apologize, but I started reading through it and it's damn boring, I couldn't get past the second page. What, what are we looking at for potential city costs as far as this sampling and then having it analyzed? Do you have any idea?
About $10,000.
And that would be utilities, obviously.
That'd be the utilities, yes. Yep.
That's total or that would be our share?
That would be our share because MPCA would be covering the first two and if they get funding for the second two, then they would be covering that as well.
And, and we're not able to take the samples, we have to have a professional lab do it. So that's why we're sort of out of loop on that. But, you know, I was really happy because they sent me a DocuSign to sign for it and I didn't sign it just because of the fact, otherwise, I guess there was a couple other mayors I got it and signed it right away and they were on track with it, so.
Well, I got a clean ice cream plate on mine, put on a tie, if I'm professional to dip the water for that.
Yeah, we can do that, we can definitely do that. So, yeah, so the motion is to give consideration to approve an entering in the MOS between the city and PCA for the statewide monitoring of PFOS. Can I get a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Appalled, motion carried. All right, engineering for Sock River Park shower and restroom, Sheila?
Okay, all of the water and electric for the campsites down in the park have been completed. We've received a plan review approval letter from Stearns County Environmental Services on our campsite application and the actual license will be issued next spring. The contract for landweir to put in the road in the campsite is null and void due to The contract for landweir to put in the road in the campsite is null and void due to timing issues. So we have two action items tonight related to the park. I'll address the first one first. The staff has been working on securing proposals for the Sauk River Campground restroom facility. The plan review and license will be conditioned on the bathroom being completed. Before going to bids, we need structural engineering. Two estimates were secured. You have those in your packets. The one quote consists of two parts, engineered drawings and bid specifications, for a total of 14,000. As mentioned, we need this done in order to open the campground. The design of the restroom facility has been approved by the Parks and Rec Board, and after the drawings and specs are received, we will advertise and seek bids for the construction of the project. So the requested action item tonight is to approve a bid for services, in this case for the engineered drawings and bid specs related to the bathroom.
What are the, I know there's, there's something about, whatever, the permit for occupation or whatever, in order to get the campground occupied, we were required to have that shower in place. Is that?
We have contacted Environmental Services, and depending on timing, they would offer us a provisional license allowing us to open next summer as long as the bathroom is under construction and they're seeing forward progress.
Okay.
So, if they're not done by, like, early May when we want to open, we could open as long as they see forward progress, and we've been in contact with them.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Design Treaty.
Okay, that's first. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Hi, John.
Hello. Good evening.
Looking for a new ambulance.
Well, kind of what Craig was alluding to, our 2013 is our oldest ambulance. We wouldn't be due for a replacement for at least another year. So about five months ago, I reached out to Everest just to see kind of what we were thinking as far as the turnaround time. And initially, he told me about 14 to 16 months is kind of where he left it. So, we don't have a committee in our department that talks about new rigs, but I definitely asked for feedback. So, at that point, I sent out an email to the whole crew, you know, what do you like about our current rigs? What don't you like? And I got some feedback. That's where the three different quotes come in. We had a couple members that want to change the graphics to have the back lit up more, the cross pattern, that's all. We had a member, a couple members say we should get bigger trucks. We had a bigger, and that's where you get from the F-450s to the 550s, one being gas, and a couple members thinking we should go back to diesel. And the reason that we switched to gas was just what we could get over the years, how there's been changes. So, I've been in contact with Everest, and I got these quotes initially on September 17th. It took about five and a half months to get them. So, we worked kind of back and forth with each other because I didn't believe when he sent the initial quotes what these came back as. I don't have the exact number. I'd ask Colleen that, and I should have brought that with. I'm pretty sure our last rig that we bought in 2018, it was between that 185, 190 is what we paid. So, there's a spreadsheet with the three different quotes that we have. The same rig that week, all three of our current rigs, they're all the same. That quoted price came in at just over 248,000. We're budgeted for 220, so that difference is a little over 28,000. To go a little bit bigger of a vehicle, gas, a little over 267,000, off of our budget, 47,000, and then the F-550 diesel is even higher yet at the 275 plus, and so a difference of 55 and a half. But I did get an update that our 14 to 16 months has now turned into 30 months. And so, we have a 2013, a 15, and an 18, and so you start to think about what does that 2015 look like. The 2013 has, just shy of 120,000 miles on it. 30 months from now, we're hoping that that rig is still functioning like it should. So, there's just really been, you know, obviously, an issue with supply and, and getting these vehicles, but the chassis, they kind of now gave us a deadline that came pretty quick, and we had to make a decision by November 17th to get this current pricing. That's why this got added to the agenda for tonight. The government discount is going down from 4,400 down to 400. So there's a lot of things that, you know, come together to make these prices go up, and we're definitely going to have to look at what our budget looks like to replace that 2015, which actually should be replaced before this rig even gets here. So, thoughts from the council on the three. Members, they've been informed. We haven't been able to actually sit down and go through all the drawings because we, we literally just last week got this deadline. I did inform the members at our meeting last night that I was coming here tonight with this and understanding that I did, you know, we listened to what their requests were, but it's quite a difference in price.
$27,000.
Does the E-450 meet the needs?
Yeah.
And is that one diesel or gas?
They're all three gas.
All three.
And they're all.
Right now?
The top one?
Yeah.
It's a gas.
It's a gas.
And so it would be just like what we have right now.
Right.
I can see the benefit of the truck chassis from a stability standpoint, and much easier for maintenance, especially under the hood if, if they had to do any work on it. I don't know if that's worth $27,000, but, and then you lose your ability to front the rear.
Also, the turn base on the Fords, I, I have one like that 550, and they don't turn on a dime. That's, that's hard.
The, the handling, I mean, I know we went with the Freightliner years ago. I was still on it at that time. That thing was awful. It was a bigger chassis, bigger rig.
We didn't have, we didn't have many members in agreement going bigger. Let's put it that way. But I wanted to make sure we got quotes for kind of what the asks were, so we could see that difference in.
Right.
I'd see the GVW on the E-450s taking out the chassis weight. It's approximately 9,000 pounds. That's pretty comfortable as far as the apparatus body and occupants and everything else. You guys haven't had a lot of issues that way?
We haven't had, I don't want to jinx us now, but we haven't had any issues.
It seemed like that would be plenty to me, but, but I don't drive them either, so.
I'm okay with the old E-450s.
If I would have came and, if I would have just did the, get a quote and came to you guys, you would have had the top one to pick from, because I'm comfortable with it, and so are other members. But we definitely wanted to look into, to be able to show that difference, so.
Would they be happier with being with 450 and look at the new graphics?
Well, you know, I even had, I even had, I haven't even had time to go back and forth with him to send me a picture of what that's going to look like, because you get a deadline so quick, and that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money for a new ambulance, so.
How much we can do about it?
And it's 24 that it would come into the budget year.
And these would be done.
Yep.
And we can hope that it changes in a year or two from now. You never know what the economy does, and if things start to go the other way, they could go back to what we're comfortable with.
Kind of like squad cars and, and fire apparatus and everything else, I, I guess I'm a little bewildered by why there's such a backup, but I'm thinking you better, you better get something ordered.
And I thought I was ahead of the game by reaching out five, six months ago. This is really far ahead, but because you're hearing about things, I was completely surprised.
And when, once this one's approved, do you want to look at the second one, like after the first of the year?
I guess, I'm hoping things turn around, like what Tony is saying. We have only, on the 2015, there's 88,000, so we've got some time there yet.
Okay.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve the 2024 E-450 ambulance through road rescue.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. And also just, you know, want to say congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you for retiring.
I sure am.
Yeah. I'm really glad, I hope to come back before you retire, because a lot of us have learned a lot from you over the years, and you're going to be severely missed.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Thanks, John. All right, 60 meeting space request.
Yep, ISD 740 has requested to use the city center on February 14th as a designated polling place for an upcoming school board bond referendum. And they are just, we're just bringing this before you. City center is a public space and is used by many organizations, so this will be an appropriate request. We're just asking that the council give consideration approving the request.
I, I don't want to nitpick this, but do they provide all of the staff then for the building?
Yeah, it has, we, all we're doing is providing the building.
We put an extra toilet paper in the bathroom.
Yep. Basically, they, it's all run by the school district, nothing to do with the city.
Patty, will you have to help out with the?
No, no, it's not too hard. It's all, they're just going to use facilities for, as their pool. They have to designate that every year.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Sauk River Park Campsite Excavating contracts.
As mentioned a little earlier, the contract to put in the road and the campsite pads with landweir, which was approved back in June, is now null and void due to timing issues. At that time, the council authorized landweir to do the work. It was estimated at approximately 83,000. The cancellation of that contract has allowed us to get bids from local contractors for this project. You have been supplied the estimates. Three contractors were actually contacted. Two have availability to do the project this fall. Third remains interested. If for some reason we decide to do the work in the spring, they would also then be interested in submitting something. If the low bid is accepted, it'll result in a savings of about $29,000 from the landweir contract. So action is requested to award the bid for the road and campsite pads.
All right, can you talk a little bit about the pricing on this, the price comparisons?
Gary, you want to take that?
I, I have it in front of me, so basically, the, the quotes were received, and Gary did meet with both of the companies out in the park. He walked the site with both of the companies. So you have one bid in front of you from Craig Tishy to excavating for 54,066 to do all that is required as far as what needs to be done to get the campsites ready. The other bid that came in was from Myers Incorporated, and that was 86,110.
Myers, Myers Incorporated, sorry. Okay. All right, so there's a difference of 32,000, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the.
We're doing our benefit.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Chee to Excavating, Craig Chee to Excavating.
Okay, there's a first. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. All right, there is no old business. We are on to new business, which, notice of appointments, and there's a few terms that are up. The Public Utility Commission, Eric Sanger's term is up, Planning and Zoning Commission, Sean Myers is up, Melrose Area Development of 30, there's Jerome Devel's position is up. And then there is two positions open on the Melrose Park and Recreation, one for Craig Schifler and then Jolene Wheeling, which will probably have to resign that position anyways due to getting on the council. So there are some positions that are open if anybody in the public would like to apply for them. Just have to come up to City Hall. We do have applications to be filled out, and we will discuss that in the January or February meetings, so, pretty much January meeting. So if anybody is interested in applying for any of these positions, please let us know. Meeting schedule, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, staff is looking to schedule a special meeting to conduct a final review of the 23 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. We are recommending Thursday, November 17th at 5 o'clock. So that's going to be a really busy night for you guys if we have the ribbon cutting as well, which I think is a great idea. So you can, you can have that perhaps at 4:00 or 4:30, so, the ribbon cutting and kind of that type of thing.
Yep. All right, so that'll be good. Everybody okay with that? All right.
And now, if you allow me, Mr. Mayor, it's a little weird, but I have to get Tracy on the phone because she's going to deal with the next items. Sorry. Oh, shit, what did I do wrong?
She's not in the streets right now.
Hello, Tracy. It is Colleen. You are in the council meeting on the conference phone, so the next item that we are going to be doing on the, proceeding forth on the agenda is the.
Riverside Development Group LLC Site Agreement Resolution Number 2022-59, Resolution Calling Public Hearing on the Proposed Development Business Subsidy to Riverside Development Group LLC.
All right. Well, good evening, council members, and Mayor Joe. Is this coincide with Item 8C on the agenda, just so that I can follow?
It does, yes.
Okay. So, do you want me to jump right in on the development agreement and the different items that the council's going to be looking at?
Please, if you could, start with the purchase agreement and just run all the way through development and deferred loan, so.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, this has been talked about for some time. I'm sure the council has followed to some extent with the MADA meeting minutes and the like, but we are at a point where the developer and the city need to take a look at taking some, some specific steps forward to further this project. So I, I'm going to skip an introduction of the project. I think that that's been, been obvious. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer them. But the items that we'll be looking at are, number one, the purchase agreement for the craft site, and that is something that you will be asked to consider this evening, and then two other documents, the development agreement and a deferred loan agreement. Those two items, we will not be asking for council action because they do require a business subsidy hearing. So the resolution you'll consider after the discussion or when you take your action items will be to call for a business subsidy public hearing for your November meeting, and the final documents will be in front of you, and you'll be asked to act on those at that time. So for tonight, the purchase agreement, I have drafted the purchase agreement based on outlines from previous documents. It has been reviewed by Chris Verda with Freiberger, which by the way, has saved the city significant bond attorney fees. The purchase agreement is fairly straightforward. It is purchasing the property as is for $275,000 with $15,000 down that the city has the ability to retain for any expenses they incur from this point till close, should the project not move forward for any reason. The $275,000 price comes from a combination of looking at what the market value of the site is, and also going back many, many years as to all of the investment that the city has had in the craft site, and is actually a relatively generous number, but we believe that it is a fair number. The idea is that the developer would purchase the property for that $275,000, and once, or following the public hearing, we turn around and make those funds available through a deferred loan to the business. A deferred loan, meaning that there will be no payments collected on that unless the developer does not meet the approved terms of the development agreement. So, the development, are there any questions about the purchase agreement?
Tracy, just so you know, Mike Goman is here as well, and we do have some graphics, so it, I will leave it, defer to the mayor and the council if you would like Mr. Goman to come up and say a few words.
Yeah, you're more than welcome.
So I think we're going to invite Mike to come up right now, Tracy to talk.
Okay, good, good. Okay, good, good.
Good evening. Yeah, Riverside Development Group is myself and my wife Nancy. Basically, we have built a couple of apartment units already. In smaller towns is our, our focus and what we look at and everything else. So as I learned about this project, it was, you know, very interesting to me. It's a fantastic site. You know, we're very excited about this and, you know, housing is a huge need in smaller communities all over and that's one of the reasons we look at it. I'm also president of W. Goman Construction Company, so we do our own building and, and manage the whole process. So, you know, the working and with staff and Tracy about with the different documents and everything else, you know, we're in full agreement with all of those and, and I can answer any questions that you might have specific about the project, so.
There's a site, just a, behind you, Mike, there's the kind of the layout.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll be a three-story structure. We're looking at, we have just over fifty-one hundred square feet of retail space and five different spaces to the front of it. We have, the upper two floors are all residential units as well as the back on grade to the riverside would be residential units as well. So there's a total of twenty-nine residential units and then we have it, we have an underground tuck-under garage and everything else. So, you know, I think this, you know, the views from it'll be fantastic on the riverside, there's no doubt about it, so.
Do we have the other, the?
This one?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
So, I know there's some concern with the location being so close to the river and stuff and from asking if you've got questions and dating a little bit, there's some concern with, you know, the next item is, on the agenda is the environmental assessment worksheet. And that obviously goes to DNR Watershed to give their input on it. Now, I talked to Sheila about this a little bit and in all the DNR, DNR's requirements for shoreline, I think their setbacks are standard like a hundred-and-fifty feet on a body of water. I don't know what order, I mean, it looks like a really fantastic project, but my concern is that if we start going down this road and, you know, Scott's not here to talk about this, whether or not these agreements we're signing, does that put, if DNR gets a hold of this environmental assessment worksheet and they don't like the project and we go down this road and so far, are we going to be protected as, as the taxpayers? If the project, you guys get, you know, I don't know, you get a couple hundred thousand dollars on the project and all of a sudden the DNR says, oh, well, timeout, this is not going to happen. Because we all know what DNR can do to projects. And I, I can't see that language and maybe, you know, there's a lot of pages here. I haven't seen any specific language addressing that. So I, I would like to see some language addressing that risk to the city. And I don't know if you're aware of that, Mike?
So, so there's a, there's a, I guess several different things with the site. I mean, it's a contaminated site, a brownfield site in reality. So, you know, there's, there's existing chemicals in the soil and different things through past studies that have been done and everything else. They're at a low enough concentration for residential development. We also, in standard construction now, you put a radon mitigation system under everything that basically works the same as what a vapor, you know, mitigation system would for the rest of the, the organic and, and other chemicals that are in the soils. And so, you know, we're addressing that. We, we do not have, because of that, we are not, our stormwater system does not leach any water through the ground or anything else. It is running into a lined pond that will then basically go through that filtration pond and run into the existing city pipes, so we are not creating a new outlet into mill pond from, from that. The, you know, we've talked with city staff about the current ordinances that Melrose has and, and everything else in terms of what the potential is, you know, with, with the site and setbacks and everything else. And, you know, we're meeting the current zoning requirements that the city has. And so, you know, that's what we've designed to, because that's what there is, so.
Right, and the concern is with the DNR, if you don't have one applicable to waterfrontage, DNR can just come in and say, well, if you don't have one in, on your books, you have to buy it by hours. And, sorry, there's risk and I just want to make sure that we are protected if we don't have that in place that, because we've been, we've been around in circles with the DNR on a lot of stuff in the past ten years, right, and Watersa District and stuff like that. So, I want to make sure that we are not getting into something too far down the road before we know what is going to happen with the, the DNR. I mean, have we even talked to the DNR? Have we, have we called them and said, this is the site plan, can we get something in writing saying it's fine?
So?
Or have some language in here saying that we are protected. And Scott's not here to address that. And I would really like Scott to address that.
So he actually has, if I may, Tony, Scott has rendered a legal opinion on this. We have made sure, we have not only talked to Scott, but we have talked to an environmental attorney as well. And we've gone back and forth with them. We've also talked to WSB, who was the folks that will be later on the agenda talking about the EAW approving that. So we do not expect that the DNR is just going to give us a letter saying, this is great and we're going to let you do this. However, we also feel that we are in a good legal position based on what we have and what has been done in the past. So I believe that we have covered our bases when it comes to the legality. Now, having said that, certainly if, if it is the wish of the council and the, to think, consider something, you know, Tracy, I, I'm sure can, you know, we can have something perhaps there. And Tracy, I don't know if you want to speak to some of that because I know we had talked about environmental as part of this.
Right, right. Well, I guess I would ask, what, what is it that you're seeking to have the council, city taxpayers protected from?
Well, we, we got on this, we have the purchase agreement in place. It's, in the purchase agreement, it's basically if it doesn't go forward, the city gets it back. Purchaser gets refunded the earnest money. But if purchase agreement goes forward and project starts and there's work done on the site and then it gets held up, the project developer may have some, may have some, you know, money tied up in that. And if we don't have something in writing saying that they are fully aware of the risks of this project going, being halted.
So, as the developer and contractor, we won't start until we have the approval process taken care of. And that's, you know, that, that takes doing the EAW and going through and submitting it and there's timelines that, you know, that they're required to respond within and we have to work through that process. And I understand that, yes, as the developer, we, we are, you know, at risk, you know, of, of things getting changed and working through them. No different than, you know, in a couple of weeks, we'll be talking of variance request for parking because as we started, you know, laying things out on the site, the city sidewalk currently is already on this site. It's not within the street right of ways and everything else. So, I mean, there's, there's always things that come up that we need to address and everything else and, and, you know, we have to, you know, we have to work through the steps as they get presented to us. And, you know, I, I don't, I don't see a situation where we would be starting construction and then, you know, it would get stopped because that's, I mean, we would never do that until, I'm not going to get a building permit until that is all through and everything else, so.
So, Mr. Goman, you've put up buildings in the past, I believe you said, and you've already got some expenses in architectural design and drafting, you're showing us pictures, you know, so you've got some expenses. And it appears to me as though you've got some ideas to what the subgrade is, at least in a portion of that lot. So you're kind of already, in a sense, assuming some risks and you're sound excited.
Correct, yes.
And comfortable about proceeding on with the environmental assessment worksheet. And, and hopefully everything's fine, we'll go from there. Otherwise, it could be a cut your losses.
Right, I mean, we have a significant amount of money spent on this project already and, and time and everything else and because the, I mean, the plans that we've got, you know, the structural engineers are already designing and architectural is, you know, seventy-five plus percent done. I mean, it, we have a, you know, it's a significant investment already and, and we had a, a meeting with, you know, staff, it was a couple of weeks ago now, and everything else to talk about some of the issues with the DNR and, and, you know, they were very, you know, open and honest about, you know, here's where the position is. And, and we talked over the different options and, and, you know, I, as the developer, said, yes, you know, I still feel comfortable, let's keep moving forward, so.
And just so you know, they have also been working with the Stock River Watershed, so they have been working through that permitting process as well for the storm sewer. And that, that actually has been a very smooth process, FYI.
Yep, and also we did save a lot of money, like Tracy said, for her help with the, you know, the bond attorney fees.
Purchase agreement?
Yes, so, I think we got our basis covered.
Can I ask one more question? Who oversees the EAW? I remember we had to have one when Jenny. Old Catholic Church was removed.
In this case, because it's a residential development, we are the required government unit.
Yep, we're the owners.
City is the required government unit.
Okay.
So we wait.
Where, so the information from this EAW then is provided to the DNR? Where, where does their input come in?
What's going to happen, well, we've an action item coming up. The EAW will be prepared once you award the bid for the EAW. Then it's all drafted up, it'll go to the council for its approval and any comments, and then it's published in the environmental quality board.
Monitor.
And it's published, and there's notification given to all the entities, including the DNR, and then there's a thirty-day comment period. And it's during that period that we're expecting the DNR to have their input.
Good.
All right, so the key actions, the council to give consideration, adopted resolution number 2022-59, resolution calling public hearing on the proposed development businesses subsidy to Riverside Development Group LLC.
Could I just ask, did Scott review this purchase agreement?
Chris Verda reviewed it with Freiberger.
Is that his attorney or?
City Bond Council.
City Bond Council.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Council to give consideration. Yes?
Ms. Ryan?
No, go ahead. Purchase agreement, no, go ahead.
Yep, so yeah, to give consideration authorizing the execution of a purchase agreement. Do we have any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Second?
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Do you want to?
Yeah, so then we're at the EAW would be for Riverside Development and the council to give, to take action to approve the estimate for the services of the EAW for the development of Riverside Development Group LLC. Tracy, do you have anything else to add on that?
Not on that. EAW is Sheila and Tim Cleveland.
Cleveland, all right.
How much, how much time do we estimate that involves?
What's that?
How much time, what's that? How much time do we estimate that's going to?
What we're planning on doing is if you give consent tonight, work will begin tomorrow on the EAW. It'll take approximately three weeks to put together, then it'll come before the council for initial review. From there, it goes to the monitor, as I said, to be published and a thirty-day comment period. We're, we're looking at, even at a rush phase very early, we're probably in January, by the time comments are returned, late December, early January. So then it would come before the council for, to review the comments and to finalize, and then the council has the final decision whether or not we go forward with environmental assessment, you know, whether more action is taken or whether the development proceeds.
Okay.
So my guess is late January.
So Dave, this EAW will not include borings or those types of things?
The EAW includes literally everything else. It's environmental, it's rights, it's traffic studies, it's the fish in the pond, the fish in the river, it's all.
Getting a little cold to slop around, count them, but I'm sure you'll get it done.
All right, what is it going to cost?
There's two estimates. I believe one of them, you have from WSB, is fifty thousand. The other one from SEH came in two parts. I believe part one was nineteen and then I think there was a secondary part for thirteen. So the recommendation would be WSB. And I can explain WSB's quote is likely significantly cheaper because WSB has done all the EAWs on the other projects. They did the River Channel, they did the Rock Rapids at the time. They've got so much history on this area and on these lots, that that is, I believe, my explanation for why that quote is what it is.
Right.
So they've got to do a lot less work because they've already done it.
So now, this is, this is obviously city expense.
Correct.
This is not going to be developers' expense. So there's, there's some of the risk that I'm talking about is now we're, we're putting fifteen thousand dollars into it right now and that is an unrecoupable cost if the project doesn't go forward.
Well, except that you also have tax increment financing that'll be part of this, so if you figure that as a.
But only if the project goes forward, right?
You're not, you're not going to move forward with anything if we don't move forward with some of the risks, though.
Right.
It's been here since the fire, so, eighty, whatever that was.
All right.
January twentieth, nineteen eighty-nine.
I mean, there's, I see what you're saying, Tony, for risk, but some of the risk has to be taken and then, and then if the DNR stops it at that point and we're.
Right, and this, this could be written into the purchase agreement, or could have been, to say that the city will be reimbursed because we don't want to take on the risk of that. We could have that in the purchase agreement.
Just to cover the?
Yeah, cover the expenses of the, this stuff. I mean, that could be put into the purchase agreement, right?
Well, you just approved the purchase agreement.
I know.
But I also think you.
That's why I thought this was a little bit forward backwards, but anyway.
Go ahead, Tracy, sorry.
We could include it in the development agreement.
Different.
Okay, that, we still got to go through that, right?
Yeah.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
I, I understand the costs and I understand, you know, that there is some hesitation here simply because experience tells us, especially working with the DNR, there could be a minor or major battle.
Right.
But I think that the reward is that it's going to open up some housing, hopefully in town, as these apartments and these locations start getting occupied, which is going to make it much more palatable for folks to want to come to Melrose and do various jobs and so on and so forth. Because that, we all know that, that's a major issue right now. There just isn't any place to live.
Right.
Are you making the motion?
I will make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then, uh, let's see here. All right, well then we're, we're done with you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to visiting with you more on this project, okay?
So now we are on to item E, Tracy, which is the 2022-60 resolution for Granite City.
Yes.
Okay.
Eight E.
Eight E, okay, so we have been in discussions with Granite City builders on the construction, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find where we're at here, on the construction of a, a multifamily, Mercury multifamily rental development. We have been, goodness, I'm sorry, I am having a hard time finding where this leads. So, um, we have, are we following council agenda E?
E.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm there, I'm there. So we have been working with them, but MATA does, a number of months ago, entered a letter of intent to not move forward and market and sell that, the property that has been highlighted for multifamily as per the adopted strategic housing plan, so that that would give them some time to figure out, you know, what they were willing, capable and able to do on this site. So, they have done much of their due diligence and they're ready to look forward towards moving, uh... towards a terms letter that would outline what the project could look like. Again, they're looking at somewhere between forty-five and seventy units of market rate rental housing. It's likely that if it is greater than forty-five units, it would occur over two phases, only delayed by a couple of months. So both parts of it would be completed within a year. Estimated cost of the project right now is estimated between ten and twelve million dollars. They would hope to have the project ready to break ground by the summer of twenty twenty-three because we've got to get public improvements out there. And their, their need, the, the number of units is really going to be driven more by what they can fit on the site and then fine tuning some of their housing market study information for what the demand is. But I don't believe there is any question as to what the demand is in Melrose. The purchases, the basic terms that we have talked about, and these will be written up. We're not asking you to act on any development agreement, terms agreement kinds of things. We simply want you to declare an intent to create a TIF district. But the preliminary terms, um, right now are looking like that we would seek a purchase price that would consist of a portion of the estimated improvement costs that are allocable to this land. The majority of that would be paid upfront, so it could help offset the city's cost of public improvements. And that we would preserve the opportunity for the city to recoup their costs for the balance of the improvements. TIF assistance would be required for the project. And it's estimated that that would be a fifteen year term, it would be pay as you go. For total assistance that is, again, approximated at two point two million dollars. At the end of the fifteen year term of assistance, the project is estimated to generate about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year in increment. And that could be utilized to reimburse the city for some of those costs they would have upfront in putting the railroad avenue improvements in place. The, yeah, additionally, the land cost would be established as an allocable portion of the costs that we paid for the property in addition to the plant, to the plating. And that's a cost that the city could also, what we're proposing, the city would recoup that part through reserving ten percent of that hundred and seventy thousand dollars of increment. That resource, once TIF assistance is paid for, has got a value of about two point one million dollars, which would, you know, go a long ways towards reimbursing them for the costs that we can't assess to the north half of the road. And to recovering any of the, the, oh, the era funds, the COVID funds that the city received. MATA authorized moving forward and replating this property as soon as we have a commitment from the developer. We've got proposals, the proposals came in less than, from SEH, at less than what they had originally anticipated. And despite the proposed project requiring the construction of the majority of the railroad avenue improvements, of about one point five million dollars, that does not include the construction of the two cul-de-sacs. Securing this development was strategic because it was such a significant increment generator, a real estate tax generator, that it will give the city two resources to help further, well, number one, to recoup costs. And number two, to help, to help facilitate affordable, future affordable single family housing in the, in the cul-de-sacs areas. I'm sorry, is there comment?
No.
Okay. A path for moving forward with this and funding the railroad avenue west improvements. It was all included in the city's capital improvement plan. That was approved, I believe, the last time that that I attended the city council meeting. And that would take railroad avenue improvements only up to the point of entrance to the multifamily site. Again, the construction of the two cul-de-sacs was built into the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Right now, the estimated cost, as provided by SEH, is one point five one five million. That includes, again, railroad avenue and I believe it includes the stormwater pond that would be used by everybody out in that development. The sources of funds that we've identified for the city to be able to move forward is land sale proceeds from Granite City that, at this point, that size at four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. I don't want you to get stuck on that number because until we know exactly the amount of land that we'll be selling to, that number may move around. The ARA funds of three hundred ninety-nine thousand. And again, the idea was to put them into this project and use increments to be able to reimburse them. So it's not a resource that the city loses, they just have a, a temporary investment of up to fifteen years. The twenty twenty-two twenty-three capital improvement fund has five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars identified for housing improvements specifically for this project. There are surplus TIF funds from other TIF districts of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred. That's just walking into it, that's a number that will continue to generate over the years. And then just plugging that final difference of forty-two thousand seven thirty-three. MATA originally designated it up to a specific dollar amount for furthering the, the objectives of the adopted strategic housing plan. And all that they have spent from that at this point, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Krilee, is basically land acquisition cost. So there are additional funds, there's in excess of seventy thousand dollars available from that resource. If we're successful in securing the Granite City multifamily development, it would be my recommendations that at some point in the future, not tonight, that the council authorize plans and specs to put together for phase one. SEH, so that we can pursue construction in the spring and kind of keep all those things going together. I think Dave Blumel may be in the audience, he might, he may want to add to this, but it'll be, it'll be advanced. We need to be able to at least get out there and do a survey and do some preliminary work so that he's able to do plans and specs over the winter. In a recent turn of events, you know, we've had a gentleman looking for a property to build storage units, some nice storage units. And in talking with Granite City, they've indicated that they'd be supportive of giving up the most western portion of this property because it would be a very complimentary use to a multifamily, a larger multifamily development. So how that plays into all of this with land acquisition, their share of assessments, those kinds of things, that's something that we're going to need to continue to define. They're looking at about two acres and if we square it off with some of the wetlands, we won't have to carry that, or carry that property. The key actions on this, number one is because the city is starting to make more of an investment in this property and the, or the project, we've, I've already done the preliminary TIF projections, you know, we'll have engineering costs, legal costs, plating costs, those kinds of things. I would recommend that the city council consider passing a resolution declaring their intent to create a TIF district so that, and to reimburse them for some of these upfront expenses. If you don't do that, you may miss the opportunity, the window of opportunity to reimburse yourself for expenses, related expenses that have been incurred prior to creation of the TIF district. I'm a little ahead of myself, I think I jumped, jumped down, jumped down to item four there. But I, I think this is a good time to be talking about this. The plan is that we would be working on developing the terms of assistance between now and the next city council meeting. And we would bring something very specific to you, but I wanted to be sure you understood what we were talking about. And if you had questions, concerns or comments, that I could be aware of those as I draft that terms letter. So if you, if you want, if you wish to do so, it could be by general nod or motion, however you feel most comfortable. The other item is the consensus on selling the westernmost two acres for storage units. It will likely need to go through the planning commission, there's a lot split that would be required. But again, I just wanted to make you aware that that's a part of what's being discussed. And then again, in order to allow the plans and specs to proceed over the winter, Dave Blumel has indicated that it would be very beneficial and more cost effective to get the topos over. Topos and survey work for the road improvements done before snow flies. Saves money, just in time and the like. That could be an administrative action that the council could bless that as well. And then that last item, again, that is the resolution declaring your intent to create a TIF district. When we bring the terms letter back to you at your next city council meeting in November, if you are comfortable with that, we will ask you to authorize moving forward with the creation of that TIF district. But for the time being, that resolution is to approve an interfund loan and it also is to declare your intent to create a TIF district. The interfund loan would allow you to spend up to five hundred thousand dollars as authorized by this. I don't think we'll come anywhere near that before we actually create the TIF district. But again, it would, that would be the maximum amount set and you'd be able to reimburse yourself with interest moving forward. And, yeah, that summarizes well, are there any questions, comments or concerns?
Uh, just a real quick one with the, with the storage sheds, I don't believe our, that would have to be rezoned, spot zoned.
Yeah, we're looking at.
I one or I two then?
Unless they were, they were a part of the multifamily, because then it would be accessory structure.
If we're splitting it off and it's a different developer, then.
But if they were part of the.
That would have to be spot zoned.
That would be spot zoned, or you could look at a designation of doing a different type of zoning out there, yeah. But if they put it, put it together, then it would be an accessory structure use.
Right.
Yeah.
If they kept it on the same premises.
And if, if it's, if it's not allowed, it won't happen.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just going to throw this out there, I, I, I know that right now it's plat it all, R one housing. There's a plat existing out there. I guess in my mind, it, I question if we have two big apartment buildings out there, how many people are going to go build houses right next to two big apartment buildings? That's always seemed to be kind of a, kind of a hard, hard thing to get, single family housing built next to an apartment building. And that's just an observation. We'll have a lot of lots out there, we'll have, how many lots are we going to have out there yet for single family?
Twenty-nine?
It has to be replanted, but there'll be two cul-de-sacs, so it'll be.
Right.
Probably twenty-four.
Yeah, so.
And.
Just an observation, I know this.
Why, one, Tracy, what you're looking for is just the creation of a TIF district for Railroad West, correct?
Uh, no, a resolution to declare your intent, that you're considering it. And that preserve your ability to reimburse yourself. And I, you know, I would add that, you know, I think that that's a very appropriate concern as to, you know, how will that impact housing? But the whole idea here has been that, you know, as we went through our, our strategic housing plan, our goal was to identify land for multifamily and for single family, but for multiple levels of single family. So in this particular case, we are not looking at the type of housing that's happening, you know, on the north side of town and out in daylight court and those types of things. This is affordable housing, smaller lots and, you know, it, it may develop elsewhere, you know, otherwise. But the idea is that affordable housing is very much a logical transition to multifamily housing. I don't expect we're going to see half million dollar houses in those cul-de-sacs. I think we're going to see, you know, three hundred thousand dollar houses in that, in that cul-de-sac. Or three hundred fifty thousand dollars. With the way the market is, one only knows what that number will be when we get there. But that has been considered and, and, and is a thoughtful part of this discussion. And I think it will make for a reasonable transition to multifamily.
All right.
One thing I do like about it is the infrastructure that you put in. If you have two large apartment buildings out there, that definitely helps pay for the infrastructure quickly. So you, you develop a forty unit house, you know, single family housing development out there, you're taking a big risk on all the infrastructure you have to put in.
Yep. Yep.
All right. City council passed resolution number twenty twenty-two dash sixty, resolution approving the term of up to a five hundred thousand dollar interfund loan in the connection with the proposed tax increment fina, financing district, thirteen dash one Railroad West, Tyler property declaring intent to create a housing TIF. Which sort of includes, you know, we're putting this all together, these four points. Is there any last questions or concerns? All right.
I'll make a motion when we move forward.
Patty?
Yeah, I just want, can you make all those four, not stacking them on, I'm sure you're stacking them all together. I just want to make sure we're meeting this.
Well, yes, because we do have a consensus.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah. Are you making the motion?
I was trying to. I sometimes don't know what I am doing and Tony can attest to that, but I, I think I, I think I tried to make the motion.
Yes. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, there's first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is carried. Information on items, utility commission meeting minutes, ambulance department report, schools and conferences, nature, energy trip summary, WWTF update. Also, there's one last thing is it's going to be Mr. Hill's last meeting tonight.
It is, my last meeting.
And I didn't do nothing to embarrass you, I just want to say thank you for everything that he has.
November and December?
Huh?
November and December.
I'm not driving back for Arizona for either one of them.
Really? Uh, we have something called a phone that you can call in?
Yes.
Well, I, I think it's best to be turning in a letter here in about a week. You have the option at some point in time, if you'd like to start Miss Jolene a little early, I suppose, you have that option.
Yeah, so that's, that's, you know, what's going to probably be, have to be put on our next agenda meeting. But Bunker, you've always been a great friend to me, I'm glad I made you bring that two dollars in and, and sign up four years ago because you keep me pretty honest and you keep me on my toes and I will miss that.
Truth be known, you actually paid me that two dollars back.
Shh, can't tell everybody those things. So, but no, I, I do appreciate you as one of the greatest role models of my life through being a firefighter. Also, being someone who had twelve more years' experience between the council and as mayor, I learned a great deal, how to look at things in a different way from you this last four years and I really appreciated it. And I'm looking forward to coming and visiting, visiting you in a nice warm climate because I hate the cold just as much as you. So I just want to say thank you for all the years of everything you've done for me.
Well, thank you. And I'd like to commend those young people who really hung in there until we got to the tax increment finding six dollars. And then they started to drift a little bit.
Yes.
But they were, they were paying pretty good attention up until then.
Yes. And then when they hear these dollar signs of twelve million dollars and their, their eyes perk up or they hear the word quick trip, yeah, it's pretty amazing how you seen them all get really bright eyed, bushy tails. So thank you for paying attention and thank you to everybody for everything. But that should be it, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Aye.